Located at the bottom of the screen. And please make sure to type in your name and address for the record if you use chat. Speakers are also asked to speak to the issues, make their comments concise and to the point, and refrain from making duplicate comments. Tonight, we are going to follow the three-minute rule because this is a little funky what we're trying to accomplish. And if you exceed the three-minute allotment, the Chair, Mauricio, is going to advise you to finish your comment. If you don't adhere to the Chair, Mauricio's got the button to turn the mic off. So I asked Mauricio for that button and he wouldn't give it to me. So I don't have the ability to turn anybody's mic off tonight. So that's our opening statement. Again, I want to thank everybody for being here. I've got a little something that I want to read that actually wrote today because I wanted to make sure that I get my comments straight. So, welcome to the first virtual commission meeting in the history of Sunny Isles Beach. This is unprecedented. Our city staff has worked very hard to make this meeting as inclusive and seamless as possible. We all actually practiced on certain days. So, but if we do have any technical issues during the meeting, please bear with us because we have a very talented team standing by to fix anything that might go wrong. This has been a very difficult time for all of us. In my personal opinion, this will not be over on May 1st or even on June 1st. What we're doing as a society is working. However, there's a real threat of the coronavirus resurging if we open back up too early. I feel that in spite of what we're seeing on the news, the federal and state governments will lift restrictions slowly and incrementally, and they're going to see how the infection rates are affected as they do so. Then, they're going to recalibrate as needed. As many of you know, my day job is as the President and CEO of One Blood, our not-for-profit blood center. Because of this role, I'm in regular contact with the FDA, the CDC, our state government, our state experts regarding many, many aspects of the coronavirus. You may have seen the news reports that we've been collecting plasma from recovered COVID-19 donors for transfusion into the critically ill, and that we've been seeing very promising results from this experimental treatment. So I have a lot of insight into various aspects of the virus, and I can assure you, there's light at the end of the tunnel. I encourage every resident to continue to adhere to the recommended guidelines as closely as possible. I have received more phone calls and emails in the past four weeks, as I'm sure many of my colleagues have on the commission, than I have in my entire five-and-a-half years as Mayor. Many of our residents think there are too many restrictions. Many residents think there aren't enough restrictions. Most of our residents think the city decides these restrictions. In most cases, we did not decide the restrictions that are currently imposed. We continue to mostly align our policies with the county and the state orders to minimize as much confusion as possible. We've looked carefully at the various county and state emergency orders to see what we can and cannot do for the sake of our residents' safety and well-being. For example, the city does not have the authority to close or open the beach. The city does not have the authority to stop new construction. This was deemed an essential business by the government, by the governor. The city does not have the authority or the knowledge to report which buildings have residents who have tested positive for COVID-19. We've been asked that a lot. This information is protected by federal privacy laws. The state reports out aggregate statistics on where COVID-19 is concentrated, but does not give us individual information. The city does have the authority to impose a curfew, which we did and we currently have in place. So I could assure you, all our residents, that your city commission and city staff have been very aware of your concerns and opinions, and we've been acting within the boundaries of our authority. We will continue to work with our community with your best interests and safety in mind throughout the difficult and unprecedented period. These days, I finish every email and conversation with the phrase, "Stay home and stay healthy." So I encourage all our residents to do that. And I can tell you, your city government has never worked harder to try to protect your best interests and protect your safety. So, okay, with that said, I'm going to get our meeting going. We've got a relatively short agenda tonight, but these were issues that we felt were important to bring before you. So I'm going to bring up our ordinances for second reading, which is our first two agenda items, 9A and 9B. So Mauricio, would you like to start with item 9A? Or do you have to read the opening preamble for the ordinances? No, that's right, it's not a zoning hearing. Okay, I always screw that up. So, all yours Mauricio, 9A.
9A is an ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Sunny Isles Beach, Florida, and the ordinance number 2008-540, approving budget amendment number BA 1920-01 to the city's operating capital improvement budget for the 2019-2020 fiscal year. The General Fund, Street Maintenance and Construction Fund, Building Fund, Public Art Trust Fund, Capital Projects Fund, Stormwater and Stormwater Capital Fund, authorizing the manager to do all things necessary to implement the terms and conditions of this ordinance, providing for an effective date, and this is second and final reading.
Excellent.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Commission. This budget amendment is necessary to record the following transactions. Fund balance, purchase order, and capital project carryovers from September 30th, 2019. Transfers from HR to respective departments for the Mercer salary study adjustments and the police step plan raises. Transfers from the General Fund to the Public Art Trust Fund for $1 million into the Stormwater Fund for $125,000. And then finally, a transfer of 2.2 million to the utility undergrounding project from other capital projects.
Okay, I'm going to open it up for any public speakers. Mauricio, did we receive any public speaker cards on this item?
We did not receive any public speaker cards, but we do have someone that wants to speak. That's Fabiola Stuveson. Fabiola, when I... Start with your full name and address for the record, please. Go ahead.
Fabiola Stuveson, 326 Point C and Island Drive.
Okay, your comment.
Do that it?
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, so I was checking, I sadly didn't participate when they have the reviews about all the budget, but I have like two comments. One of them, I see that the capital projects and expenditures go from 20 millions to 27 millions. And I see that there is a big impact in the FPL and also transportation improvement, and the parts take a big chunk of it, almost $9 million. So considering what's going on right now, just as a recommendation for next budget too, is like to be really more fiscally responsible because you know, and we know that the impact of the virus is going to be tremendous, being tremendous in the economy. Everybody's being affected. So with that in mind, just to be very fiscally responsible about expenditures because I know our city is in a very, very, very good place, we have a surplus, etc., but let's keep it like that, considering what's going to happen to most families that are in our community. And the second thing is that I saw that there is almost $600,000 for the new government center for the design process, the 180-80. And about that, I would like to know if it's possible to include a little bit of the people into that design process. So it doesn't happen like what happened with the town center district that then the people didn't feel like they were included, and maybe with that new construction and that design process, we can somehow have an input. And my last third comment is that thank you, all of you, for your leadership and for management. It's amazing how grateful and how blessed we've been in our city. And I think that the biggest part is because of you guys. You guys are doing an amazing job, and thank you, thank you from my family, from everybody I talk, thank you for what you guys are doing.
That's great, thank you Fabiola, thanks for the comment. Are there any public speakers Mauricio?
No other public speakers, ma'am.
Okay, Fabiola, just so you know, usually during the summer, we go through the budget in detail. So all the things that we decide to budget for, we literally go through line by line in hearings during the summer. Truthfully, nobody ever comes because I guess they find it boring, but I would encourage you to come because I think your comments are good and they're well-founded, and I think you would find the process interesting. But we appreciate the comments, and I think we all wholeheartedly agree, now's the time to be conservative, there's no question. So thank you. Okay, with that, I'm going to close the public forum, and are there any questions from any of the commissioners for Tiffany or any comments regarding item 9A?
I have a question.
Vice Mayor.
Tiffany, thank you for that. Are we accounting for the additional cleaning that we're doing right now on the sidewalks and the bus shelters and all those areas, the disinfectant?
We are, and hopefully, hopefully, we'll get FEMA reimbursements for that. We are tracking it separately so that we would be able to provide them with those details. And so our hope is then to submit that for potential reimbursement.
Do you believe that this budget amendment is going to cover all the additional costs that we're incurring during this time?
Well, I might have to do another one because we're in the beginning phases of this, and so we don't know for how long this may continue, but for now, it does.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, hearing no other comments, I will take a motion to approve the budget amendment, item 9A. Okay, move by Vice Mayor, do we hear a second? Second by Commissioner Goldman?
Second.
Okay, second, excellent. Mauricio?
Commissioner Viscara?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sfetchen?
Yes.
Commissioner Lama?
He's muted.
Yeah, Alex, there you go, there you go.
Goldman?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Ordinance is adopted.
Thank you.
All right, our first virtual ordinance, I felt like we just had a baby. So, okay, okay, let's move on to item 9B.
9B is an ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Sunny Isles Beach, Florida, and the chapter 265, Title Zoning of the Court of Ordinances of the City of Sunny Isles Beach, amending section 265, 31C to eliminate conditional uses in the city's single-family residential zoning district, providing for separability, providing for conflicts, providing for inclusion in the code, providing for an effective date, and this is second and final reading.
Okay, who's up for this one? Is that you Chris?
I think that would be me, ma'am.
Okay, Ed?
Thank you, thank you Mayor, Commissioners, it's good to see y'all.
Same here.
Our current code provides in single-family residential zoning districts that family daycare and religious facilities could be permitted in those districts by conditional uses. We originally were just going to remove religious facilities, but at the last meeting in February, you folks said, "Take a look at all of them and see if we can eliminate all of the conditional uses in residential neighborhoods," and that's what this is intended to do.
Okay, excellent, I think in that meeting, a resident spoke and we heard them. So Mauricio, are there any public speakers on this item?
No public speakers for this item, ma'am.
Okay, so public hearing is closed. Any comments or questions from the commission?
Yeah, I'm just happy to see that when I spoke with our city attorney, that all of the issues that were presented by the residents have been addressed. So thank you, Ed, for paying attention to that and having a new and improved second reading of this ordinance.
Yep, but I want to thank the residents for coming in. You know, all my neighbors showed up at that meeting, and I just, you know, I've said it many times, I'm the happiest when we see people advocate, whether they agree with us, disagree with us, it doesn't matter, it shows that government's working. And to your point Dana, everybody listens, so that's important. And Mr. City Attorney, thank you, we appreciate that. Any other comments? Okay, hearing no other comments, do I hear a motion to approve this ordinance?
I'll move.
Okay, okay, so Dana made the motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Alex? Okay, Commissioner Lama, Mauricio, voice vote?
Commissioner Goldman?
Yes.
Commissioner Lama?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sfetchen?
Yes.
Commissioner Viscara?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Ordinance is adopted.
Okay, our second ordinance, we just had twins. Okay, we're going to move on to resolutions, and that is item 10A, Mauricio?
10A is a resolution approving a first amendment to the agreement with Christopher J. Russo for portable term life insurance attached to his 2020 budget.
Okay, I actually brought this one forth, and this actually started over a year and a half ago with Chris and I, but Chris has got remarried, as we all know him. No, he has a new family, he has an old family and a new family. And so he asked for a change in his contract to provide for portable term life insurance, and we got a range of quotes from the $9,000 to $12,000 range. The fact is, when Chris's contract was first drafted years ago, he actually waived some provisions that would have normally been in his contract that added up to even more than this amount of money. So I didn't have any issue, and Chris has been doing a great job, so I really had no issue bringing this forth to indulge him on being able to secure the term life policy. So what I asked was a not-to-exceed of $13,000 because the $12,000 may have some fees or some other, if we're on the high end of the range. But, so I'm asking if we can amend the city manager's contract to be able to purchase interim life insurance at an amount not to exceed $13,000. Mauricio, are there any public speakers on this matter?
Up for this one, ma'am.
Thank you. Any comments or questions from the commissioner, from the commission? Okay, so Chris, it sounds like a squeaker, I don't know.
Who's going to call again?
Yeah, so do I hear a motion to approve?
I'll move.
Okay, okay, I hear, so Commissioner Goldman, do I hear a second?
So moved, second.
Okay, second from Vice Mayor Sfetchen, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay, all right, Chris, settled.
Thank you.
Okay, so I'm going to close this portion of the meeting, we're done with our ordinances and resolutions. I believe that we had some public speakers that filled out cards ahead of time. So Mauricio, would you like to do?
Yes.
Read those off?
Yes, before we continue, ma'am, let me just make a brief comment. Anyone that is currently signed into the meeting, if you wish to participate or make a comment or ask a question, you may do so by raising your hand or sending a chat, which will come directly to me, and I can read it into the record. The following comments have been submitted via the online web form. The first one comes from Mary Hannah, her address is 18201 Collins Avenue. And her comment is, "With the hope of a slow reopening, is the city considering allowing residents to walk on the beach as long as social distancing is kept and even wearing a mask?"
Okay, and this is one of the primary reasons why I drafted my opening statement. So, we don't control whether we can walk on the beach or not right now, so the beach is closed by the state and by the county at this time. What we hope to see as restrictions lighten up a little bit is exactly what you're describing. I'm going to implore our governor and our county mayor to allow us to have folks walk on the beach with proper social distancing, but maybe not spend time on the beach, but maybe not sit on the beach. I know it sounds crazy, but it's a lot easier for us to patrol the walking than people congregating together on the beach, and that was what was problematic four weeks ago. When Miami Beach closed their beach for spring break, all of a sudden on a Sunday, our beach was packed, and this has been the issue. But once again, we didn't impose that restriction, and although we provide the lifeguards for the beach, we don't control the beach, a lot like we don't control Collins Avenue or Lehman Causeway or 163rd Street. These are controlled by other levels of government. So, but we do believe as restrictions are lifted in increments, like we talked about, that this is something that we think would probably be a good restriction to lift, at least so folks could walk on the beach, because it's much safer to walk along the beach than it is to walk along Collins Avenue or the interior streets of the city. So that's my perspective on it. If anybody else would like to comment, so Chris, go ahead.
Yeah, the one point I'd like to make in addition to everything that you're saying is, you know, since the beach was closed on March 18th through the order of the county mayor, one of the things we've been thinking about is, as we go to opening the beach, we have to be cognizant of our lifeguards who are rescuers, and we don't want to have people in the water maybe initially, but maybe walking and being able to use the beach, because until we get a confidence level, I don't think it's safe for our lifeguards to be, you know, they're going to be in people's face more often than not when they're making any kind of rescue or assistance. So that's another factor.
Yeah, I think we're all saying the same thing. I think what would be, again, what we're going to see over time is this incremental easing of certain restrictions on businesses, on places, on people. The one thing we're not going to see for a long time is the gathering of crowds. You're not going to see that because ultimately, you know, this virus is still very pervasive in our society. So the beach, I agree with Chris, that the beach could be opened for walking as a walking path, and we may even have two lanes, by the way. We may even say, okay, if you're walking north, you want to walk high on the sand, if you're walking south, you want to walk low on the sand, so that way people don't have to pass by each other. I have a lot of manufacturing operations at One Blood, and I have new pathways that basically are circular, so people don't have to pass each other in the hallway, and so this promotes social distancing. So I could see, again, with the authority of the county mayor and the state government, I could see us, you know, working toward those goals. Does anybody else have a comment on that issue?
Yeah, Mayor, if I may? Thank you. Today, I was on a call with Director Moskowitz, who, as everybody knows, is in charge of the emergency services for the state, and I specifically asked him this question because this and construction is probably the most messages I got was about the beach. And he indicated that definitely not in the next 15 days for certain, they're not going to be opening it, after that, they'll see what they're going to do. But you can anticipate for at least 15 days, it will not be opening.
Yeah, I think what we're seeing is nationally, you know, there was this May 1st date that everybody was all the rage about, but the fact is, you know, the flattening of the curb has been working, and a lot of places have already punted to May 15th, you know, as far as pushing this date. It reminds me of when you're waiting for a plane and it's late, and every 15 minutes they increment the time of the plane, you know, because, and you're sitting there for three hours in 15-minute increments, you know, waiting for information. But unfortunately, I think we're learning as we go along, you know, as a country, as a state, as a region, and this is what we're going to see. So I would not be optimistic about some of these issues for at least two to four weeks, as the Vice Mayor's pointing out. Any other comments? Okay, very good question, thank you. Okay, Mauricio, do we have another question?
You're muted.
Yeah, Mauricio, there you go, there you go.
Okay, this next comment comes from Felix Kizner, address is 250 174th Street, apartment 1904. His comment is, "If the governor decides to open Florida in the near future, what local authority does the commission have to keep quarantine in place? Also, can a city mandate masks and gloves?"
I have no idea. I mean, yeah, I think that we could mandate masks and gloves if we wanted to. So I do believe that we have local authority to do that. I don't know that, I guess we could have authority to keep quarantine in place, couldn't we, Chris?
Yes, we can as long as the emergency declaration stays in place.
Right, so, yeah, we can usually make things more restrictive, but we can't make things looser. So in other words, just like with construction, you know, we looked at construction and said, "What could we do?" You know, and Ed had three city attorney opinions that said, "We can't do much because we would be trying to relax the governor's order as opposed to make it more restrictive." So to Felix's comment, most of what you're saying, most of what you're indicating, we probably have the authority to make it more restrictive as some of these things loosen. Whether we decide to exercise that authority or not, you know, will probably be up for debate, we'll see. But I think it's circumstantial, and we'll have to see how things unfold in the future. And, you know, I watch very carefully because of my unique position at One Blood, you know, the infection rates and, you know, where we're standing as a society and how these decisions are getting made. So I can tell you, that has a lot of influence on my personal opinion, you know, based on what I see. I'm in a unique position to see some of that stuff, so it works out okay. Any other comments regarding Felix's comment?
Yes, I'd like to make a comment with something, for example, it's very easy to say, oh, everybody should wear gloves and masks, and that probably would be healthier for us, but we also, one of the things we have to consider is the availability of those things, not just something we can just go out and get these days.
Yeah, so, yep.
To Jennifer's point, it is the availability, but it's also the enforcement. Are we going to have policemen standing on every corner of every part of the city, "Oh, your mask isn't on," and "What type of a mask is it, an N95?" Oh, your mask isn't on, and what type of a mask, is it an N ninety-five, is it a reusable gloves and so forth? Then are we gonna, what are we gonna do, find people for uh how we're gonna enforce it, so? I think we've, but we don't have a huge city geographically speaking, but we certainly, there is that consideration of enforcement of something like, of that magnitude.
And one, one.
To your point, Jennifer, go ahead.
I just wanted to add a, a little tangentially, and now we're seeing gloves and 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 masks, you know, littering our sidewalks. If we could please stop that, that would be great.
Yeah, um, you know, to Dana's point, in the prior administration, before I was mayor, you know, a law was, an ordinance, or a, or a prohibition was passed that I voted against, which was no skateboards on the sidewalk. And we have never issued a ticket for a skateboard on a sidewalk. Who's gonna bust a fourteen-year-old? You know, Captain Brandon Eddie's on the line, I mean, you know, if Chief or Captain gonna bust a fourteen-year-old for riding a skateboard? I mean, you know, so it's one of those things, I think we're all very careful not to pass rules we can't enforce. So to your point, at One Blood, it's been very difficult to keep my, my employees in in personal protection equipment, you know? So we had to order, you know, we've had to order hundreds of thousands of masks from different vendors in order to um, um, in order to um, to be able to to get them what they need. So to your point, you know, it's not that easy to get right now, so I think that, that, you know, we'll play it by ear. That problem will probably get solved, you know, in the next thirty to sixty days, maybe, but
Yes.
you know, who knows, who knows, and it's hard to say, so.
Mayor, can I just ask?
Sure, Vice Mayor.
Thank you, um, regarding private property and the condos, this has come up. Uh, people have been complaining that the, the workers and so forth are not wearing masks and gloves. We don't have any authority over the condos, even if we did pass some sort of ordinance saying that you have to wear masks. You can only, we could only do something like out on the street, or in the government center, not somebody's private property like a condo.
That's, that's correct, Vice Mayor.
That's correct. Um, what we were able to do, what, what we were able to do was that on construction, we were able to at least restrict construction and occupy buildings. We couldn't say you can't stop doing construction, because I think the govern, the governor's order really spoke to new construction, because that was a segment of the economy he wanted to keep open. But what we did do was we restricted construction and occupied buildings. So to your point, Vice Mayor, if somebody is coming into an occupied building to do work, it better be an emergency repair. And frankly, I think the building can say, you gotta have a mask on. It's up to the building, I mean, but the building could basically say, we're not letting in without a mask, and if you want to be a vendor, you know, um, um, you better wear a mask. And most vendors are, you know, quite frankly, most folks are getting it, because they realize they're gonna be around other people, and they're gonna have a mask on. So that's a, that's the issue, Dana, I think I cut y'all, go ahead.
No, no, I thought the county had these guidelines for the masks anyway, for outdoor construction, but.
We, we require. They do for outdoor.
In our order.
Yeah, that's right, they, they actually, we required it in our order, they didn't originally, I think that they, they, they've packed some on since then. But again, like I, like we said, you know, to the question earlier, we can be, we try to be more restrictive in a pragmatic manner. You know, that's what we've been trying to do, but to, but to your point, Larissa, you know, it's, the buildings should not be having construction work being done now that are occupied, you know, simply because we recognize you don't want a bunch of workers in a building coming in and out every day that's full of people, so.
I mean, like the management of the condo buildings, the condo board, I know Felix lives in the Winston Towers, they could probably rule saying you have to wear a mask and gloves if you work in the building anywhere.
They could, they could, that's up to them, because that's a, that's a function of their employment, they could have passed that a year ago, you know? Yeah, so it's, it's, so, yeah, absolutely. Okay, any more comments regarding Felix's comment? Felix could comment, yep.
I just wanna add to the construction uh piece. It's, it's not just about obviously important part, which is the virus, but now we're all home. I don't want to be trying to work or trying to do the distance learning when they're replacing the floor upstairs. Like, it's, it's incredibly disruptive when, when you're home and there's work going on that's not emergency.
Right, right, okay, Alex.
I have a comment, going back to Jennifer's point about people throwing away their gloves in the um, in the street. Can we cite the individuals that are doing this for littering?
Yeah, they're littering, yeah, they're littering, they catch them.
Yeah, because it's just, it's just too much, yeah, I just find it very inconsiderate and and dangerous, yeah.
Yeah, um, to that point, I've gotten a lot of comments from residents, when folks are sitting in their apartment all day, they are picking off every infraction they see, and they're writing me saying, why, you know, catch them, do this, do, and I'm like, every square inch of our city is now um exposed to some kind of bad behavior. And so we don't have enough police or enforcement people, you know, to, with the, with the thousands of eyes of our residents that are sitting home looking out of their balcony, you know, so it's interesting, I can tell you, I can tell you when there's one person on the beach, because immediately I get five emails, you know, so like, so it's been very, it's been very interesting, or my phone starts ringing, you know, because everybody, and but again, you know, I'm okay with that, people are being vigilant, it's okay. But it's funny, because ultimately, you know, I could tell you on certain days when that one person walked on the beach, what block they were on, because I either got three phone calls and two emails within a ten-minute span, because folks are obviously don't have a lot of other things to do, so, um, so it's interesting. But to your point, to your point, Alex, you know, I mean, if we can catch them, great, you know, so that, that would fine. Okay, any, um, Mauricio, you have, you have a few more public comments?
Three more, uh, the next comment comes from Tatiana Sarmena, address is four thirty-one Ponciana Island Drive. Her comment is, please open the beach for exercising.
Okay, I think we covered the beach, Tatiana, um, you know, we spoke about it, and believe me, you know, we would love to open the beach for at least a walking path, north and south directions, like we talked about, um, I think Vice Mayor Svechnikov, and actually, the person that Vice Mayor Svechnikov was talking with on the phone with is, is, is a big dog, it's Jared Moskowitz, and he's the head of emergency management for the state. So he's a person that weighs in on these kind of policies, so, um, but we will continue to interface with the state and the county and see as restrictions get rela, get relaxed, you know, what we can do there, so thank you for the comment. Does anybody else want to comment on that? I think we beat that one to death, so, okay, Mauricio, next public speaker?
Next speaker is Marcus Andrade, his address is one nine one 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 Collins Avenue, apartment twenty zero one. His comment is, open the beach for residents to walk, our sidewalks are not good for walking mainly for seniors with disabilities. I'm a resident over ten years and must walk for my health. Living on the beachside, the sidewalk is not good at all with construction and narrow.
We're not arguing, so again, this is very indicative of a lot of the phone calls and emails that I've gotten, so, again, we hear you loud and clear regarding the beach, and we will do what we can within the context of our authority, thank you, Mauricio?
The final comment is from Pavel Stoev, address is one seventy one forty five North Bay Road, unit forty four oh four. His comment is, open the Sunny Isles Beach for walking, jogging, biking, surfing, and swimming only. Patrol and discourage activities such as congregating, grouping, or organized sports.
Right, once again, um, you, I think we all recognize, and whoever's watching this meeting can see that this is a very common theme. Um, it's not called Sunny Isles Beach for nothing, and clearly, um, one of our biggest amenities in our city is our beach, and we completely understand um, and relate the public's frustration over the closing of the beach, so we'll continue to work with our county and our state government and try to figure out what we can do, even in a limited manner. So I do agree that um, that, you know, if we could do this in some kind of a limited manner, it would be a good thing. So um, and like I said, probably maybe two different directions, making, making sure we social distance, but, you know, but it'll be, you know, for a walking path as opposed to a um, a congregating path. Um, are there any more public speakers, or public, or, or speaker cards, Mr. Clark? No, okay, is there anybody on the commission that wants to bring anything up while we're on the, while we're here?
I think we can all agree that we really do value the air and the pathways in the beach, and I think we're all in agreement that we're looking for a, a, a workable uh solution, be it mandated by the county or the state, but it's clear from the discussions at the county level that uh there really is a, a some, a lot of discussion about opening up parks and other recreation and open space areas, and for us, it really, it just boils down to access to the beach, and we're all, we're all in this together, and we all really do want to see some sort of return to our, uh, to our lifestyles, so.
Okay, um, so I just want to make one more comment, um, our city staff, our city manager, our city attorney, everybody on this, uh, everybody that works at the city has done a fantastic job. Um, you know, again, I think a lot of the public feels like you snap your fingers and things get done. You know, and the truth is, you know, our city, our city is made up of a collection of individuals, like every organization, and those collection of individuals are going through the same thing you're going through, okay? They have families that are in quarantine, they may not live, Chris happens to live in the city, others don't live in the city, but everybody's in the same boat, yet our city has continued to function in a very professional manner. Um, calls are getting answered, people are getting taken care of. Um, our city commission is also, everybody has pitched in in their own way that they can. Um, you know, I know the Vice Mayor had a lot to do with senior meal delivery, you know, I mean, everybody is, everybody has kind of stepped up and and helped in any way they can, and again, I just want to remind the public, you know, I've gotten some phone calls like you wouldn't believe, but that's my job, I'm supposed to take it, okay? But the fact is, you know, everybody's in the same boat, so, um, it's, it's been a very trying time for everybody. Everybody's got families, everybody's got relatives, my mom's eighty-five years old. When I told her a month ago she couldn't go to the casino anymore, she wanted to kill me. Okay, and then a week later, she was happy I told her that, because then she realized what was going on. But the fact is, we're all, we're all in the same issue, and, but I do want to just point out that our staff, our city staff has been, you know, extremely responsive, um, making sure that everybody stays safe. We've had a lot of difficult judgment calls through this whole process, and everybody's kept a very, very level head. And um, and again, and I want to thank, you know, thank the commission as well, everybody on the commission's been very supportive. So as Dana pointed out, we're all in this together, it's not gonna end soon, I can promise you, and it's gonna end incrementally. So it's gonna be something that we're gonna continue to evolve through, and we're gonna take it day by day. But the main thing is, you know, stay home, stay safe and stay healthy. This is the best advice that any of us can take, follow the guidelines, if you go out and you have a mask, wear it, wear your gloves. I mean, it's, it's, you know, this stuff shouldn't be taken lightly, I can tell you, so, um, I want to thank everybody, and again, Mauricio's staff, this was a great, you know, for our first Zoom meeting, the audio didn't go off, all the screens stayed up, I mean, it all worked very well, so you guys did a great job, you know, setting it up, I know, uh, you know, this is a hand for you guys, so, yep.
Good job, good job.
Yep, absolutely, thank you, guys, okay, I'll take a motion to adjourn?
Wait, can I make a comment?
Vice Mayor, yep, go ahead, Vice Mayor.
I know that you, you've already said this, but I just want, uh, really point out, like, Kathy Fernandez and her team have done really an unbelievable job getting information out to, to everyone.
Absolutely, amazing.
Yeah, and, I mean, just shocking how well they're working under these circumstances, so thank you, Kathy, to you and your team.
Yep, um, we, we, we have a lot of heroes around here, so thanks, Kathy, I mean, there's a lot of heroes, and, you know, believe me, um, you know, our building official too, he has taken it on the chin with this building. I mean, it's been very, very difficult for him too, I mean, everybody looks out their window, they don't see the construction workers social distancing, the phones start blowing up. You know, so again, Clay and his team as well, I mean, everybody, Public Works, the whole nine yards, everybody, our, our police force, again, you know, everybody's been doing a great job, so, you know, so many, many thanks. And um, and, you know, I, I, I would, I'd like to say this is our first of many um virtual meetings, I hope not. I hope that we can get to a regular meeting, you know, as soon as possible, but like I said, in the meantime, I think we just all have to simply, um, you know, you know, roll with the punches here and work through a very, you know, very difficult situation, but, um, but again, I want to thank everyone, thank my commission, and um, and, you know, city manager, city attorney, thank you for everything. And Mauricio, great job in the meeting today, so do I hear a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
So moved, okay, meeting is adjourned, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.